Um special study um session on um update on Muscle Rock. Um I'll hand it over to Mr. Chu for the crucial update on this matter. Uh Director Chu.
Yes, uh good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Uh I really want to thank you all very much for the opportunity to meet with you to discuss what has been going on at Muscle Rock. Um the the reason why we're all here tonight is because the landfill at Muscle Rock um was compromised uh earlier this year. And Muscle Rock will need much more attention and resources than what we have been providing over the last forty plus years. Uh while the information we have to share is not good news and there are still many unknowns. We are very excited to share with you the information we have learned to date and to answer any questions you may have. So at this time, I'd like to introduce uh city engineer Kevin Fear uh who will start the presentation. Kevin?
Good evening and thank you for having us here, Mayor and council members. Go ahead and start the presentation should be up on the screens. Um so uh tonight's update, we'll go over um a few things. But first, I'm gonna start on the background and a little bit more information about what typically goes on out at Muscle Rock. Um talk about some current monitoring and maintenance activities out there that are typical. And then we'll move into uh you know what we discovered earlier this year as Richard was alluding to. So the solid waste observation that was first discovered in January. Um and then I will hand it over to uh I'll talk about, excuse me, some of the activities that were taken shortly thereafter. But then I'll hand it over to our consultants from Cotton Shires. We have Andrew and David here uh who will go through their in-depth review of what they found so far about a landslide that is occurring directly adjacent to our solid waste. Um and then at the end of the presentation, we'll talk about some next steps and um some ways that this will move forward. So.
Uh be- before you proceed, is there anybody else hearing like a high pitched sound? I'm getting a lot of feedback or maybe it's just mine.
I heard it earlier. It was such a really high but yeah, I heard it earlier.
All right, let's talk here and test it out. Is this any better? Something okay?
Seem to be louder, but I I think the pitch is still there, but uh it's okay. We'll deal with it. Thank you.
Okay, apologies. So a little bit of terminology and uh get everyone oriented on the site. So this is a topographic of the site down here at the bottom of the page is the Pacific Ocean. Towards the left on the page to the north and towards Thor Beach, San Francisco. And then on the right of the page is the parking lot that you enter from Westline Drive. And so what this large U shape here represents, uh this is called the lower landfill or the lower disposal area. This is the larger um deposit of waste that was put there during landfill activities. And what we'll focus on tonight is primarily this upper disposal area or the upper landfill you might hear it called. And this is located in the top left here in the northeast part of the site. And it's directly adjacent to that landslide that we were mentioning. You can kind of see that carved out of the coastline right here.
Sorry about that, uh Kevin. Um Councilmember Manalo has your hand up.
It's it's really loud now. It's not like high pitched. It's like, is it? Can you guys hear that?
I do. It sounds like an old school Atari game.
Oh, no.
I hear it. To my, I hear it's pretty loud.
No. Very good. Oh, it's stopping.
It's gone now. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, I I'm sorry about that. If it happens again, I'll uh I'll turn the microphone on and off. All right, so the background on the site. Um so landfill was active. It was receiving waste in the nineteen fifty sixties and seventies. So about a million to million and a half yards of landfill material were deposited here. Um which if you were to equate that to the number of trucks, uh it's about hundred thousand to a hundred fifty thousand large truckloads of material. That's like large dump trucks. It's a pretty substantial amount of material. It stopped receiving waste in the late seventies in nineteen seventy eight and it was ordered closed by the state. And soon thereafter, the city came into possession. So we were deeded the site from the garbage company at the time. And um this is not uh unique to the Bay Area. There are other coastal or rather, excuse me, waterfront landfills in the Bay Area. Um but since that time, we have been in possession and responsible for the maintenance of the landfill. So the site's overseen by a few regulators. The state water board has a landfill division that provides oversight. And they primarily deal with the fact that it is a landfill and there's municipal solid waste here. The California Coastal Commission has oversight due to its location on the coast. And then what's considered development could be even such just moving earth or moving waste around. And the Coastal Commission has jurisdiction here for that.
Kevin, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's happening again. Um I just want to restart your mic.
Might need to do that. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, it's better now.
Do you mind going back a little bit, Kevin? We couldn't hear you. Like when I was speaking, what you were speaking about, I didn't hear it.
All right, so uh you're talking about this slide, council member?
Uh towards the end.
So after the sure, after the landfill was closed, it was ordered closed, no longer receiving waste in nineteen seventy eight. The city came into possession of the site. We were deeded the site from the garbage company.
Thank you.
And then uh since that time, uh we have owned and maintained the site and been responsible for it. And then um regulatory wise, we have oversight from the state. We have the state landfill, state water board's landfill division is responsible for the site. Um and they have regulations that apply here because there is municipal solid waste in place. The California Coastal Commission has jurisdiction due to the fact that uh like earth movement and waste movement is considered development along the coast. And the county of San Mateo, their environmental health division has oversight um when the public has possible interaction with um with waste. So they think of it from a public health perspective and public safety. Some of the monitoring and reporting that goes along with that oversight. For the state water board, staff conducts monthly site inspections to take a look at what's going on and track any changes or um any any issues that come up. Uh we submit biannually a groundwater monitoring report. We have a consultant that the city hires to test the groundwater and sample it and then report the findings to the state. We submit a long-term flood protection report, um including effects of sea level rise and that's updated every five years. And then the water board had the site perform slope monitoring report um one time several years ago. The California Coastal Commission requires annual seawall monitoring. Wasn't shown on the previous picture, but the entire coastal side of the site is primarily protected by a riprap or stone seawall. And also, we submit a planned retreat management plan which discusses the site's relation to California Coastal Commission policies regarding the long-term state of our coast, natural erosion processes and um uh state policies around uh coastal activities. And then finally, for the San Mateo County Environmental Health Department, uh they conduct quarterly site inspections and send us those results. Now, in typical uh maintenance and CIP activities out there. Um these are, so the maintenance activities out there often find themselves in our capital program because of the size of that. Because the amount of dollars that goes into it and the frequency. So you'll see things like the seawall or riprap maintenance where the large boulders along the coast need to be uh maintained or make sure that they're in place and they're enough to protect uh landfill. We perform at least twice a year vegetation management. Um everything grows pretty quickly out there, so we clear that. And then we remove sediment from the storm drain system before it enters the ocean waters. Uh we also, due to the sites being on the San Andreas Fault, maintain the parking lot, Westline Drive. Uh those see a lot of earth movement due to their vicinity, um than a a couple hundred feet of the San Andreas Fault. So they're constantly moving and constantly deteriorating, plus the salty and foggy conditions uh cause a lot of maintenance on those locations. And then the gabion walls on the site, um these are these stone baskets that kind of line the landfill. Um they're flexible, they're metal baskets filled with stone that do rust from time to time. They move around, get turned over, and then we reconstruct and rebuild those as needed. So that's the background, kind of the normal Muscle Rock. And one of the reasons we're here tonight is is due to that intersection of the landslide and upper disposal area, which we'll start going into. Um the status quo and maintenance is no longer enough for the site. So it's gonna be in red for emphasis here, but the upper disposal area has been compromised, okay? It's something that's observed earlier this year and it's the main reason why we're here tonight. So continuing here, um and I will have a diagram on the next two slides to show you a little bit more about where this is located. But these observations, suddenly on January nineteenth, staff observed that there was exposed solid waste in the north bluff area. Another term for it, basically the western outcropping of that upper disposal area, the upper landfill. Um invisible solid waste is not intended for the site. Um so when we found that, we later, a few days later in in mid to late January, discovered that that those waste materials had started coming down the hillside, as you can see in the photo right. And they eventually had reached just above the beach area and were mixed into some of the landslide debris and sediment that had been there. Um and you'll see with Cotton Shires when they come on that that um landslide movement has been going on for many years. But we did find that there were some waste materials mixed in. So going back to this, just to reorient, I was just discussing the exposed waste condition which occurred right about here. This intersection between the landfill and this active landslide. You can see a little more in detail. This is a Google Earth sort of a three D image um of the active landslide that's happening. And the exposed waste is right about here as the upper landfill is roughly in this area. It heads this direction. And our lower landfill, just for reference, is somewhere in this vicinity and it heads way off page towards the parking lot. So we're gonna talk about this landslide and what it's doing to the upper landfill, upper disposal area. So upon seeing this, um here's what the mitigating activities for uh are for this exposed waste based on what was seen and what was observed. So very quickly, um our contractor did pull back the exposed waste from the cliff so that it was no longer right on the cliff face, ready to fall down at any moment. And we initiated some uh office work, so we conducted an aerial survey to get current topographic imagery. Um the image that I just showed you is from twenty sixteen, so we know how it was from twenty twenty-two. We completed some landfill boundary drilling to confirm or affirm our um legacy landfill limits up there to really know where exactly waste is at this point. And then we initiated this initial landslide study. It's kind of the first thing you do when you um understand that there's earth movement that you're interested in is to do, it's like call it a desktop study and that's what we initiated uh with Cotton Shires and Associates. And then since that time, we've continued to remove the visible waste materials from the beach as they reach that area. And I say as they reach that area because that slope in the prior image is very inaccessible. These are not, these are trails per se, but they're more so for drainage channels. There's really no good access and this entire area is unstable. And down here, there's no direct access to the beach. It's uh stopped by a seawall, which is quite steep. Um so there's no no path to get to these areas where the waste has come down um and eventually collected down here a little bit. So what we have done is there is a footpath that uh we've had uh our contractor go down by on foot and whatever they could see, uh we've had them monitor and pull out and then discard. So here's a here's a picture, just for reference, gives you a little bit of insight into the scale of the pullback that was done. Primarily in February and completed by early March. And um here's the edge of the cliff. You can still see there's a little bit more work to do. This is in the middle of the movement where they just start pulling back waste. And this, all this is disturbed earth. This used to be planted just like the materials up here. Um and this material was later moved onsite to uh another, the lower landfill area where waste is deposited, was free deposited there. So ultimately, um this was pulled back uh at least ten feet from the edge of the cliff that existed at that time. And uh this total width is about up to forty feet or so, but there is still waste material left in this area, just not within the first ten feet. So that's more background on the exact observations from earlier this year and what happened since that time. So I was kind of telling you pretty much what we observed on that intersection of the upper disposal area and the landslide itself. So at this point, what I want to do is I do want to turn it over to Cotton Shires and Associates. So I'll introduce um Andrew here and he will start talking about the results of the actual landslide study that they have conducted. And after he's done, I I will wrap up with some of those next steps. So I'm gonna stop sharing, Andrew, and you should be a co-host and able to start sharing your screen.
All right, well, uh thank you, Kevin. And um uh as Kevin said, my name's Andrew Mead. I'm an engineering geologist with Cotton Shires and Associates. And uh along with me here tonight is David Schreier, who is a uh principal geotechnical engineer um with Cotton Shires and Associates. So I appreciate this opportunity to kind of discuss what we have um uh found out there um during our uh geologic study of the upper disposal area. So first, just to uh orient you uh somewhat as Kevin did, um the, this is an aerial view of the um disposal area, about the lower disposal area, this larger green mass here. And the upper disposal area, which is the subject of interest this evening, is a smaller green mass over here. The upper disposal area landslide complex, as we're uh referring to it, is this red mass right in here. And just for reference, this San Andreas Fault is this magenta line um transacting the page. So the first thing we did uh as part of our study was reviewed historical aerial photographs of the site to get a sense of the evolution of the site, um what it looked like before the landfill was there. You know, was there any historic uh slope instability and just to kind of have an understanding of the history of the site so we could understand um how it has evolved and what may be leading to the slope instabilities. Uh we reviewed photographs from nineteen thirty-five through two thousand and five, and these are stereo pair aerial photographs. And what that means is if you view them with a stereoscope, it's essentially like uh putting on three D glasses. So you can see these in three dimensions and view and actually see the topography as opposed to a a flat image. Uh so we reviewed these uh images and we see that the upper disposal site is filling a historic drainage channel. Um the uh the waste management company uh took advantage of that low spot in the in the terrain to um stockpile the landfill material. Um the upper disposal area landslide complex, that the big red blob from the previous screen, um is in the same location as historic slope instability. So we've seen landsliding in that area. Um going back all the way to nineteen thirty-five, there's evidence of landslides within the area. Um we see that there's episodic headward advancement of the existing landslide. And what that means is just more and more bites are being taken out of the upslope area and it's advancing towards the upper disposal landslide or of the upper disposal area. Um one thing of note is the nineteen fifty-eight photograph, uh it documents uh a seismic reactivation of this landslide after the nineteen fifty-seven San Francisco earthquake. And uh finally, uh throughout the history of the site, there have been numerous instances of of side cast fill, which means just simply bulldozed uh uh earth material shoved over the side of the slope kind of covering, masking the landslides themselves. So this is our first uh historic photo from nineteen thirty-five. And just for reference, this dashed uh uh bean shaped uh feature here. That's the upper disposal area or the site of the future upper disposal area. And you'll see that on all of these photographs as we take through, so you can just kind of orient yourself and use that as a reference to where these things that we're looking at are. Um this blue line you see here, this is that historic drainage channel. So water's coming off the slopes and scouring a uh a a channel through here that drains out towards the ocean. Now here in red, what we see is evidence of uh existing landslides all the way back to nineteen thirty-five. Uh this straight line feature here is the former ocean shore railroad uh bed and uh this blue line down here is a drainage, which is the surface expression of the San Andreas Fault going through the site. Moving on to nineteen forty-six, you see here once again the upper disposal area and the drainage channel. And in red here, existing landslides. One thing of note in this photo, when we viewed the photos immediately preceding it, you see what is now the uh ocean shore highway has been installed. And in this area right here, the roadway has been curved up slope from the previous photograph and indicating that the landslide advanced uh toward advanced up slope, took another bite out of the hillside and required them to re uh reroute the the road. Here in green is kind of the first example of side cast fill, so they simply dozed material over the top to support the roadway, but kind of masks the upper portion of the landslide itself. Uh nineteen fifty-five, again, you'll see in red here, existing landslides. Um so newer landslides developing on the coast here. Uh there's now drainage pipe uh directing water underneath the um the ocean shore highway there. Nineteen fifty-eight, this uh photograph is taken after the nineteen fifty-seven earthquake. And you can see right in here, a very active landslide. We see these kind of linear features uh going through there and that indicates uh sort of uh cracks and compression bridges um showing that this thing's actively moving. You can also see that the landslide toe or the bottom of the landslide has now jutted out uh beyond the line of the coast there. It's awesome note during this uh or at the time of this photograph, the lower landfill had begun operations. And then you can see the development, the Westlake development is under uh construction at the top of the slope. Moving to nineteen sixty-five, again, we see existing landslides in the location of our landslide complex. And you see the uh lower landfill operations are now filling in that drainage channel that is the kind of surface expression of the San Andreas Fault. Uh up to nineteen seventy-five, within this photograph, you can see that the landfill operations have begun at the upper disposal area. You see this uh lighter colored material here. Um it is where they're starting to place uh landfill uh within the drainage channel. Again, you see here in red, evidence of existing landslides, but also additional side cast fill uh sort of shoved out over the head of the slides and obscuring them somewhat. Nineteen seventy-nine, at this point, the upper disposal area is complete. And you can see this nice uh clean surface here uh at the top of the upper disposal area, the the cap of the landfill. Um it in conjunction with that, you see the grading on the slopes down below the landfill. And this actually appears to have removed material uh from the head of the landslide, but also pushed out some more fill over the top of the landslides. Uh in this photograph, the grading down below is not quite done. You can see kind of one, two, three benches in operation here. There's eventually six benches that go down to the coast. And you can also see in this photograph, we've kind of annotated it, but the riprap revetment at that's armoring the coast of the lower landfill has been placed at this point. So switching now quickly to an oblique photograph, so kind of a view from the the side of the of the nineteen seventy-nine condition. At the time of this photograph, all you can see, all of the benches have been completed, all of the site grading is complete. And you can see right in here, this is kind of an example of some of that fill that's been pushed out over the landslide here. And again, some fill pushed out over the landslide in this area. In this next photo, this is the last of our historical aerial photos that we'll look at. Um you can see down here, these benches that we're just looking at in the previous uh oblique photo where there was sort of a lobe uh of fill placed out here that has already by nineteen eighty-one been mobilized and um has has moved its way downslope into the ocean below. So after kind of looking at the historical uh landslide movement, we took a look at the recent landslide movement and we did that by looking at uh geo-reference ortho photographs. And all that means is that photographs are all um tagged in a way that they can be laid exactly on top of each other. So you have uh kind of fidelity of position within the photographs. What we see there is that the the landslide's advanced headward. Again, that's just moving up slope about eighty What we see there is that the landslide's advanced headward. Again, that's just moving up slope about eighty-one feet since the year two thousand. That, that equates to retreat rates of one point six to three point seven feet per year. So again, just moving up slope one point six to three point seven feet per year. But what we see is it's not consistent, it's large episodic movement. So you'll get ten feet one year, fifteen feet the next year, and then nothing for ten years, and then another ten, fifteen, thirty feet. In two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, there was an area of the slide that moved up to seventy-five feet up slope during that single year. The other thing we see looking at these photographs is kind of the mechanics of the landslide. So what you have is this material that's falling off of the upper bluff at the top of the slide. And it's moving its way down slope. And generally, when you have slides like this, they'll eventually kind of come to a, a, a static or neutral position because the material that's falling off down slope starts to support the, the upper slope. But what we have here, you've got the ocean down at the bottom, which is constantly eroding the toe, the bottom of the slope, removing this buttressing material and allowing the slide to just continue to kind of conveyor belt down slope as you remove the, the toe. So we'll just kind of zip through these a little bit, but this is the two thousand three photograph. And you'll see this red line, that red line will stay on all the photographs, and that's kind of the initial position of the top of the landslide. The other thing you'll note is this blue line at the bottom of the landslide, that's the toe position of the landslide. And again, this big green mass is the upper disposal area. So between two thousand three and two thousand five, you had a minor failure on this lateral margin, this material fell into the slide body itself. Two thousand five, two thousand seven, now you see this orange or the yellow material that has, is what has fallen off of the upper portion of the bluff. And you'll see the light blue line here now is our toe of slope. So you can see from two thousand three, it's migrated up slope. This is the eating away at the bottom of the, the landslide and removing that material. Jump forward now to two thousand seventeen. So we've got kind of a ten year gap where not a lot happened. But you'll notice that the toe of the slope has continued to move inland, removing material, removing material. And when that happens, you have failures down at the bottom, which lead to failures in the mid slope, which lead to failures moving up, up, up. And you'll get these large headward or up slope advancements of the landslide. In addition, we noted in this photograph that there's some new riprap placed at the bottom of the revetment. Just later that year, so going from April to September of two thousand seventeen, again, more headward advancements. And this year, we noted in the groundwater monitoring data that there was fairly elevated groundwater at this point that also contributed to this, this destabilized slope in addition to the eating away at the toe of the slide. Again, two thousand eighteen, additional advancements, toes moving up slope, removing material, supporting the upper portions of the slide. Two thousand nineteen, additional advancement. And it's kind of the same thing, repeat, 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 move the toe inboard headward or up slope advancement of the landslide. And two thousand twenty, this is kind of the last major headward advancement that we saw. And you'll see the toe has moved up slope with the exception of this newly deposited material towing out, kind of similar to we saw in the fifty-eight photo. Just a quick look at the kind of total magnitudes of these movements. At the toe, you've moved almost sixty feet up slope. And the head of the slide has moved eighty-one feet over here, sixty-one feet over here, and clipping into this disposal area. In addition to kind of reviewing the historic photos and the recent photos, we performed geologic mapping out there. And this is our site geologic map. And just to give you an idea of what the various colors mean, all this red material is landslide deposits. Kind of the darker the color, the more actively moving the landslide is. This dark green material, this is the upper disposal area, and you can see this is the area that's been pulled back as Kevin discussed. And the lighter green material is the artificial fill that was placed as part of the grading operations. What we saw as they were putting the benches in, just general grading for the landslide or the landfill operation. We'll take a quick look at section A, A prime, and this is just a, a section through the earth. So we can have a sense of the depth of these various materials. So this big red mass is the landslide deposit. This material up here is the landfill material, and this was what was laid back in this recent work that Kevin mentioned. One thing you'll note here is we have topographic data from the eighties or from nineteen eighty, when the site was complete. And you've got headward advancement in that time of like a hundred and fifty-five feet since nineteen eighty. Just a larger view of our geologic map showing section B, B prime, we'll take a look at that real quick, just to give you a sense of the depth of the fill material. You can see right here, you've got fifty-five, sixty feet of material in that landfill. So our findings are that, you know, the upper, upper disposal area landslide complex is just a series of landslides that have kind of coalesced to become one larger feature. It's been active since at least nineteen thirty-five, and the primary cause of the slide is the removal of lateral support created by the, the wave action in conjunction with elevated groundwater and the weak bedrock we see at the site. Without any sort of mitigation, it's unlikely to stop moving. And any mitigation strategy will be complex due to the kind of geologic constraints and the necessary regulatory approvals. Some possible mitigation alternatives. One idea would be to just extend the riprap armoring at the toe of the slope to eliminate that erosion at the toe. Another option would be a seawall, which is essentially performing the same function as the riprap armoring. The only difference is that it doesn't take up beach space, so it can sometimes be viewed more favorably by the regulators. Another idea would be to put in a shear pin wall at the upper disposal site. Just drill large diameter piers and fill them with concrete and basically make a, a cut off the, the landslide from the landfill material to kind of hold it back to pin it in place. And then finally, just a sort of limited debris removal where you, you'd grade out the upper landfill kind of a larger scale from what Kevin was discussing earlier with the pullback. You actually grade out a, a fair amount of the landfill material to remove it from the system and also remove material from the top of the, the slide, which will help stabilize it somewhat. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Kevin.
Great. Yeah, thank you. I know you have the, uh, thank you. Yeah, you do have the slides in there. So the status of the upper disposal area, you know, in short, the landslide's occurring adjacent to the upper disposal area, and it's going to continue to expose waste as the landslide continues to progress headward or eastward into the upper disposal area. And so prompt study or prompt progress is required to determine what the best course of action or courses of action are in order to address this. Off to the next slide. And diving in a little bit more here. So the upper disposal area, these needs are near term. So we already have seen one incidence of exposed waste. And so this requires a diligent pursuit of these solutions, whatever they are. And each new waste exposure, should it occur before any, any large scale solutions implemented, is going to require a prompt reaction in order to mitigate it, in order for us to remain compliant with the regulations that exist on the site. And so our duty here is, as a landfill operator, is to not allow any new landfill waste exposures. And a lot of these next studies and next steps are going to help do that. So want to provide a little bit of a metaphor. You may hear this in the capital program from time to time about deferred maintenance. And so, you know, engineers, we like to, like to bring this up all the time. We love our cost benefit analysis. And so the, the short of it is deferred maintenance saves you now and it costs you more in the long term. And one of the reasons it costs you more in the long term is not just due to these solutions, the solutions get more expensive. But also we know that with inflation and with construction costs going up, doing work today is just more expensive tomorrow. So that's the, the message here that comes with this little graph is that, and that's why we say diligent pursuit of solutions, because the deferred maintenance or metric applies to the situation. Let's go to the next slide, which is the last one here before we open it up for discussion and questions. So there are some proactive next steps that we do want to pursue here. And that would be to continue to collaborate with the regulators, working with those three agencies that we mentioned before, and depending on what solutions there are, and there may be other regulatory bodies that come into play. We'll continue to address the fact that there's exposed debris. So anything that reaches the beach level, continue to pick it up. But also continue pursuing the removal of any other debris that's remaining on the hillside, which is inaccessible. So initiating that next landslide study. So once again, what we have Cotton Shires has done here, they've done this initial look from the office. And then in order to look at any project or solution to a landslide, you do a much more in-depth review of the local conditions, more drilling, more study, and then actually design to put together a project after you evaluate those several alternatives and maybe some more. Those alternatives would be some of those that Andrew had on his last slide, like sheer pin wall to hold back the waste, prevention of toe material removal down at the beach, et cetera, et cetera. So you define that project. There is also some land rights and title work that occur here due to the many land transfers that have occurred since Caltrans first operated the highway. And before that, it was a railroad. So actually, one of the primary landowners here is the, and I had it on the earlier slide, I didn't mention it though, is the Golden Gate National Recreation Area. The federal government is the primary landowner of the majority of the actual landslide itself. We're the owner of the landfill, but they are the neighboring property here that would require coordination in order for any access, even for drilling study on their property. There may be other owners as we finish up our title work. We do have consultants working on that already. And then tandem with all of this, as we develop alternatives and define a project, would be looking at funding mechanisms. Exploring not only grants, but depending on the scale of any solution, looking at city funding mechanisms. Could be any, anywhere from bonds to other sources, and that's all something that needs to be developed. And it depends again on what the eventual solutions are. And then of course, ultimately execute solutions. And we say that because something does need to be done, and we want to diligently pursue that. So I think, Andrew, is there anything else on here? That is it from our presentation. And so at this point, myself, Richard is here, Andrew is here to answer any questions and to open it up.
Kevin, before, before we get into discussions and questions, I did want to clarify for the benefit of the council in regards to kind of this, this historical effects of the landslide and, and what's been occurring over the years. And this was new information that we discovered as a result of this initial landslide study. This is information that we did not have at the time that we were, you know, monitoring and maintaining the landfill. The, the difference and the impact as a result of the, the landslide activity and, and over the years is now it's impacted and exposed the upper landfill area. Over the years, it's just been dirt coming down. And now because it's impacted the upper landfill area, that's kind of what brought this whole thing to our attention and, and initiated the study to, to get additional information as to why this is happening and how it's happening. So we definitely have a lot more information now than we did in the past. Over the forty plus years, we've been working very closely with the regulatory agencies and honestly, the focus over the years with the regulatory agencies has primarily been the lower disposal area, which is much closer to the ocean. And we've done a lot of work for the seawall maintenance and all of that. And so that has has so far, you know, knock on wood, performed pretty well. This upper disposal area was, was not kind of the, the highest priority until just recently. So a lot more work to do, a lot more information to, to gather. But this is kind of what we have to date, and we definitely wanted to share it with you all. So with that, I think we can open it up and answer any questions that you all may have.
Mr. Mayor, would you like, I was going to ask if you'd like us to, council members, or would you like to?
Go right ahead, Kevin, if you go, go right in. Yeah.
Councilmember Manolo. Councilmember Manolo, I do see your hand raised on there. I wanted to ask you first, on the left of the screen.
Hear me?
Yes.
I think you're on mute.
Okay, I think back online. Can, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Hello?
Yes.
Sorry, I got disconnected and we can, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to this, obviously, from your presentation, the importance of getting ahead of it early has benefits with cost savings and also, I mean, safety reasons and also the environment. One question I have is, after you do your analysis, your next plan or next steps in regards to kind of the options that we'll have, is, is there, given the time right now, simultaneously, has your team looked at federal, federal grants coming from the government that would help support us in, in, you know, this endeavor? Would this fall under some of the federal grants that are coming down the pipeline?
I can definitely answer some of the federal grants we've been interested in. And yes, that is one avenue for funding, depending on, of course, the eligibility of this project compared to those grant sources. But right on the onset here, we did explore about a dozen different funding sources, just to see what could fund our work now or maybe in the future. So we are tracking grant announcements for programs like the federal governments of building resilient infrastructures in communities. There's a possibility this type of work could be eligible for that. There's some other programs we've explored and haven't had as much luck with, like, but we are continuing to keep that on our radar. And oftentimes, once there's a plan and a project together, that's the most opportune time to apply for funding. But we are always looking to see, even if sometimes planning grants and design grants are out there.
Yeah, wonderful. I know that you're in the first steps. It's always, you know, I'm glad that simultaneously you're looking, because if you align it with those timelines, we know that currently, right now, we have dollars flowing from the federal government, like you said, around infrastructure projects, which in some cases in the past, we, we, we wouldn't be having those types of dollars come down. And so I, it's really great to see that. It's, you know, a lot of work I know upfront to really create options and a, a plan ahead, but then also see what resources are out there in that respect. But I really want to thank each and every one of you on, on this. I, and Mr. Mayor, thanks for putting this meeting together around a topic so urgent and important and seeing the historical kind of just what has happened over time and where we're at now. You know, I, I think it's a no brainer around being able to get this moving. And so thank you to the staff. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember DiGiamani, have you on the next here?
Hi, you're.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. The same.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. The same, Mr. Mead, with your expertise, Kevin, Mr. Chu, and all the experts here, you can see that we're in a state of emergency, I guess. And then what effect, whoever, whoever can do this, can, does our climate change actually have any effect on this as well?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember DiGiovanni. Climate change is definitely something to consider, especially with sea level rise. Those events make it worse likely in terms of rains becoming more intense. So that is something that's also being looked into as well. In addition to just the constant wave action taking away the material and kind of this chain reaction of landslide material, so this is definitely a complex issue and a complex site to deal with, with the fault zones and all the other issues that we have in addition to the various property owners that was mentioned previously, so.
Yeah, so that's what I was going to ask you. So we all know that Helen, remember when she brought up, our friend Helen, who is the leader of the Muscle Rock, when she brought up some of the homes, how does this affect the homes up in that area?
For the most part, our study focused primarily on the landfill itself and the landfill activities based on, you know, that's what, you know, our city is responsible for in terms of maintenance and operations of the various projects to stabilize that. We haven't spent much effort in regards to analyzing, you know, homes above.
Okay, and then back to the climate change. I don't know what we have or if anything's applicable, but I know you guys stay on top of all the grants. And so, you know, I'm on CCAG, and we address all those climate change. If there's monies available, I know that you guys stay on top of those as well for my meetings. So anything we can do to address it from all ends, I guess, right, Kevin? Mr. Mead, it has to go from all ends, climate change, health, seismic activities. I mean, this is some area that we were fortunate enough, or whatever it is, to have as our daily city maintenance, and I agree that deferred is not the best word. And environment, we all, you know, we want to protect our environment, you know, for more than just safety, health, but we need to protect our environment. So whatever you experts do, I think that, I don't know if you have to come bring it back to us, but I'm in full support of whatever options you come up with, and I think being proactive and getting in, doing whatever we can and trying to secure dollars to see whatever we can do to help or approve. I don't know what we have, but we can definitely figure out something, because this needs to be addressed. And I know that it's been over and over and over again, Mr. Chu, Kevin, and Mr. Mead and all, that this has been one area of ongoing, wide, all the time. So whatever you come up with, we're in this great age and great minds at all you have. I'm all for it, and maybe the governor can help us with some funding at the state level, on state legislators. Will help us, you know, if you need that push, you know, that be glad to push for those dollars on my end or with CCAG or whatever, and they're very supportive. So thank you for the study, and thank you for doing this as an urgency, Mr. Chu and Kevin and Mr. Mead. And it's pretty urgent, and I can see that it's relevant to move quickly and get our studies and move forward and and address it, to address it, not defer it, but to address it. So thank you very much for all your expertise, and look forward to seeing what we can do and internal support or whatever we have to do to get on top of this, because it's not just calling cost is money on deference. It's going to destroy our environment, which we love so much, and cause health issues as well. So let me ask you a quick question. I think someone mentioned that in just, is it the upper disposal site or the lower disposal site, that due to, I guess, the waste, what was being dumped when it was a land, you know, landfill, that because it was dumped in certain areas, is that right, Mr. Mead? That maybe they took advantage and dumped more, or what was that statement, or?
Yeah, in the area where there was that in size drainage, they just took advantage of that low spot to be able to put more material in, basically, you know, they found a hole to put the material in. So all that really means is that there are areas within the deposit where it's where it's deeper than what we see exposed right at the landslide, where it's encroached on the landfill material. When it crosses through that drainage area, the deposits, what we've seen in the drilling that's been done so far in the you've got fifty or so feet of landslide, sorry, landfill debris in that area.
Yeah, because I didn't know if we gave them an area they could dump, and then they just would be on, or they just, they were able to go wherever they could go, I guess, at that time, based on years ago. So we are where we are now, and now we just have to be proactive and get a handle on it. So thank you very much, and let's see what we can do, because it's pretty serious. Thank you very much. Thank you all for all your expertise, and let's get on it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you so much, and I have a few questions I'd like to bring to your attention and to help me understand. First of all, I'd like to commend staff and previous council for approving a deferred maintenance for Muscle Rock. Although it was very well-intentioned, we have no control over the forces of nature to cause what's happening now. To Mr. Mead, thank you for the historical perspective. I think by providing the historical perspective, it helps establish otherwise known as a needs assessment. And you have definitely clearly shown that. To Mr. Chu, you had made mention that there's been no outreach or further investigation as to homeowners that may be involved. I think that would be also important as we move forward to identify potential homeowners that may be affected. I recall getting a letter from a homeowner who stated, I mean, they were very upset and was thinking about litigation against the city. So just a thought, I just wanted to put that out there. In finding potential funding resources, I do recall in, and I believe it was Foster City, which was the impetus to get this passed by the Board of Supervisors. Then 2021, the Board of Supervisors approved something called Multi-Jurisdictional Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, which during this plan, they hope to trigger FEMA approval and funds, which ensures that the County of Samantail and its planning partners remain eligible for pre- and post-disaster mitigation project funding. This update includes all twenty cities in Samantail County, the Incorporated Area, and fifteen special districts. I bring this up because it says this update will remain active until 2025. So I understand there's a lot of work ahead, and I think the sooner we can get moving, like costs, project determinations such as what you made mention, the seawall, or which has helped before the pass, your concrete pier, or your grade out of the landfill. Thank you for also bringing to us, to attention of the geographical issues, number one, and regulatory approvals that is going to be needed as we proceed forward. There was one other note I had made. Oh, and in regards to your maps, maybe perhaps in the future, it would be great to have on your topographical maps heights and width currently and what it was before. In your later slide during your historical view, you did show some of the changes, but I think going back to 1935 and indicating the heights, which the heights might be the same, but it's the width. And I think that would prove to be very helpful. So definitely, please keep us informed, and that's all the questions and comments that I have at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I did want to ask another word. Definitely was a remark about the homes, and I wanted to ask Richard if he wanted to address that item.
Yeah, that's something that we can discuss with City Manager's Office as well in terms of kind of the limit of the scope for the investigation work that we need to do. In the past, there have been some situations where in that area, some homes were lost. I wasn't around at the time, but it's definitely a potential risk there and something we need to discuss more internally in regards to, you know, the scope of work and to what level do we do the investigation work for.
Would you reach out to Helen as well, Mr. Chu?
Sure, be happy to.
Thank you.
Certainly, and I did want to, Councilmember Sylvester, also, thank you for the input on funding as well. I did want to kind of just allude to the height and width of the historical photographs, and I appreciate that feedback. That's certainly something we can take a look at to provide a little more background going back farther.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fair.
Vice Mayor Buena Ventura?
Yes, thank you. Can you put up that slide of the alternatives?
Yeah, I'll ask Andrew to go ahead and do that. Just a moment, we'll pull it up. All right.
There it is. Okay, so my question is, out of those proposed possible alternatives, I want to know how much is it going to cost? If you could give us, I don't know, you can't give us an exact figure, obviously, but what do you think the costs are with each of those alternatives? And what is the alternative that perhaps staff is more looking towards in terms of what to possibly do? And then I also had a question about, you said that there were other owners of the property, and what responsibility is it to them to be responsible for sharing in the actual cost of whatever we decide to do in mitigation? Or is the city the sole one that is responsible for mitigating this, and it's incumbent upon us to get the funding? Or can we rely on other stakeholders to make that commitment? Those are my questions.
Yes, let me start here. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Buena Ventura. I'll start with the last question that you had in regards to, you know, potentially other agencies and a responsibility for cost sharing. That is something that we are looking into in regards to kind of the the land title search work that was mentioned in one of the slides previously. So that is something we need to kind of dig further into and do some outreach, and probably also have some discussions kind of on our end with City Attorney's Office, just to evaluate what options we may have once we have the information in regards to, you know, property ownership and who's responsible for what and where things occurred. So that is something definitely that we are researching as well. To your first question in regards to the possible alternatives, I think at this point, there still is a lot of additional investigation work that needs to occur in terms of fine-tuning whether these possible alternatives are feasible or not. There's going to be a lot more geotechnical work in terms of, you know, if we look at some of these options, for example, sherepines, you know, how deep do we need to go? Some of those questions are still to be answered, and so it would be a little difficult in terms of coming up with some of the costs. With that being said, Andrew or David, I don't know if you have, you know, some other projects that may have implemented some of these, and you may have maybe an order of magnitude type of, you know, dollar amount that maybe you could share. But there is definitely a lot more investigation work that would be needed to work these out further. And that is what we are planning to do. So Andrew, David, you have any thoughts or any?
I'll take a stand. Thank you, Richard. Your points were very well made. Without having sufficient additional subsurface information, it's very difficult to estimate costs, but we do have experience in all these types of work and design. So I quickly jotted down ranges, and I'm not going to call these dollar signs, I'll use widgets, okay? So I would say the most economical would be the limited debris removal, and I would put that at point five to two widgets. And there's a lot of unknowns, including where are you going to dispose of this material? If you have to take it to a a level three dump site, there's going to be a lot of charges, including trucking and fee. So there's a lot of unknowns there. The second most economical would be the riprap armoring at the toe of the slope, and I would say that's a one to five widget value. The third most economical would probably be the seawall with the horizontal drains, and I would say that's a five to ten widget cost, and probably the most expensive would be the shearpin wall, and that's probably in the ten to forty widget range, and the reason that's such a big range is because there's a lot more unknowns there that we have to figure out. I'm sorry it's so vague, but at this point, we've done no subservice exploration, and we're just using our experience for similar type work we've done up and down the coast.
So that's helpful, actually. But and then the final question I have is, this is probably staff, out of which budget, which fund is this going to come out of in terms of the daily city funds?
Yes, Vice Mayor Buena Ventura, at this point, we don't have a funding source fully identified yet in regards to, you know, costs for mitigation measures. That's something that we will need to discuss and work with finance on that. You've heard earlier in terms of us trying to see what we could find as far as grants go. There's also the potential in terms of the solid waste fees and potentially needing to increase those. But that's also part of the work in terms of working with finance to help identify funding sources, most likely, more than one, in terms of some of these options, and along with some of the challenges in terms of identifying these costs and these various alternatives, is also the regulatory agencies and what they will allow or disallow. So one of the ones that David mentioned in terms of kind of, you know, maybe the second, you know, most cost-effective was just the riprap armoring. But based on preliminary discussions with the regulatory agencies, that's not something they like to see. So again, still a lot of work to be done and discussions to be had in regards to narrowing down these alternatives and potentially seeing if there's some other alternatives that might make itself available as well to consider. Hope that helps answer some of the questions.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Kevin, this is more of a historical question. Was, I just wanted to understand like the logic of like the 1950s, and why would they want to have a landfill that was close to a neighborhood and close to an ocean? Like, what was the whole logic? Was it just out of convenience?
It's, that's, you know, that's a very tough question and I always like to kind of keep this in mind or a photo in mind that kind of this is what we're protecting here, right? And that decision wasn't, didn't include possibly these coastal resources when it was made. When Andrew mentioned earlier, kind of taking advantage of the topography, that's, that's one of the possible reasons why this site was chosen. Because due to the fault line and all sorts of other historic geologic action, there were these deep canyons where that drainage ran down the hillside, which means just throw the waste in there until it's full. So it was a very convenient place to place garbage. It was not an area that was used for anything else. And then other, other than that, it's, it's really hard to tell. You know, I kind of wish that in the mindset, there was a little bit more consideration about the long term.
Right.
Yeah.
And was this like a, oh, go ahead, my bad.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to provide some additional information in terms of what, what I've seen and read over the years. And it was my understanding during that period of time, there were other landfills that was reaching capacity. And there was a great need for a, a, a new landfill location to, to place solid waste. At the same time, I think there was, the construction industry was, was really booming and there was a lot of activity going on. There was a lot of pressure to find a, a landfill to, to open up a new landfill because other landfills were, were, you know, reaching its limits. With that being said, you know, back in the, in the 50s, there probably wasn't that much emphasis in regards to environmental impact and all these things that we, we know now and that we pay more attention to now. And then that in, in conjunction with what Kevin mentioned in terms of, you know, there's a hole in the ground, a canyon. It's, you know, it's very convenient just to, you know, put garbage there and put dirt over it. And, you know, this was kind of out of sight, out of mind. But, you know, now, you know, many years later, we, we know it, you know, could have been a better decision to, to choose something different, not being so close to the ocean and not, you know, through a fault zone and landslide areas. But yeah, it's kind of something we're, we're, we've inherited and something we need to work on.
Right. And so because of this, I guess, pattern of landfills and the lack of, you know, in hindsight, lack of understanding of the environment, are there any other comparable context that is similar to what's going on with Muscle Rock in anywhere in California or in the nation? And what have they done?
Yeah, I, you know, as Kevin mentioned, you know, this isn't the only site. There are others, as you can imagine, every site is unique and is there, there is none that is exactly the same. I am aware of another landfill that is similar, but it's, it's at the same time, it, it has much less volume of, of, of garbage in that landfill. In, in that situation, you know, one of the things that they've done was they dug out everything, all the garbage and relocated it and, and, you know, offhauled it to a different location. That's very challenging for, for us at Muscle Rock in terms of the volume of debris that we have and of all those options that was discussed, completely removing and disposing of all the garbage, relocating it, probably is even the most expensive compared to all of those options, not to mention potentially additional environmental impact due to trucking and, and offhauling and all of that. So that's all part of what we need to work on in terms of trying to figure out what the best option is, what's the best solution, cost wise, environmental wise, and try to come up with something that we can put together and propose for council to consider.
So I like to speak. Oh, go ahead.
All right, yeah, it's, you know, the other similarity we can draw is, you know, we're, we're talking mostly about the upper disposal area, which is on the coast and experiencing a landslide. But the lower landfill is very similar to all of the other bayside landfills where the policy is protected in place. So for example, you know, there's, I believe Berkeley has sports fields on top of theirs and there's other examples throughout the bay where these closed landfills are just, they're closed and, and left there. Whereas here, we don't, we have this complicated factor for the upper disposal area, but the lower disposal area is quite similar to all of those. Minus the topography and San Andreas Fault, of course, which also comes.
It's like the worst of the worst. Well, I like to stay hopeful, so. And I know we're trying to be pragmatic, but then I also like to be imaginative about as well. What would be like the utopian, like end all be all, like, if we had all the funding in the world and what would that look like? To solve this problem?
I would say that's a, that is definitely a tough one for this because I think today's sort of statewide, a lot of coastal resources are tending towards keeping a natural environment, letting those natural processes continue. And so the landfill gets in the way of that. You know, thinking may change over time. You go elsewhere in the world and coastal resources are well traveled, right? You have development there, but here in California, a lot of our coastlines protected means let it be natural and let people get to it and sort of realize that. It's tough to do that with a land.
Yeah, and next to a fault line. But I'll stay hopeful. We can do one of these steps. And I just want to thank the staff and Mr. Mead and everybody for this well thorough presentation. I think I see Councilmember Sylvester with his hand up, so go ahead, man.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I know you have a lot of work ahead of you and it's going to be brought back before the council. I think also what's going to be brought back to the council is possible resources, availability of funding. And to Mr. Schreier, I like your, your indication via widgets. And to coincide with the mayor, let's not, even though it is unpopular, but who knows? I think we have time in the sense that the daily city voters could understand the nature and the hazardous nature of this issue. Let's also consider perhaps a ballot measure to go out to the voters to help pay for this. I mean, through the city attorney and through finance, you know, rough estimation. And it doesn't have to be a valid measure, say a three year ballot measure, but perhaps maybe over a seven year period. I, I mean, you folks are the experts, but let's not forego the issue of trying to get grants anywhere we can find them. Because, Mr. Chu, you've been very good at that. But let's also consider a ballot to go out to the voters what may assist. So just a thought I without do. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. We're, we're considering all, all options. Everything is on the table, so thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see any other hands up.
All right. Well, I just want to say thank you to everybody on this call. It's going to be a very, very important issue that we'll probably be discussing for generations to come. But I think one thing that we have to really nail down is that it takes one step at a time. And I'm hopeful that we can see the urgency behind this issue and we can put the resources and the energy towards making this happen and sustaining this area the best of it, to, to do the best of what we can do. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.